2019 Planning Commission Meeting. My name is Dee Oliver and I serve as the Chairperson of the Commission. And before we get started, I have asked Commissioner Wall to lead us in the prayer, and Commissioner Horsley to lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today thanking you for your guidance and wisdom. As we begin this hearing today, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Help us to remember our responsibility to serve our community with great insight guided by understanding, wisdom, and respect for all. As we make decisions today, help us to promote the common good as we work together for the betterment of our great city. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts today. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. Our pledge is to the Father of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have asked Commissioner Weiner to introduce the members of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mrs. Oliver. On the far end down here is Kay Wilson, she is our City Attorney. Next is George Akraz, he is a contractor and he represents the Beaches District. Sitting next to me is Jack Wall, Jack is a civil engineer and he represents the Rogers Hall District. My name is David Weiner, I'm in Commercial Sales and I represent the Kempesville District. Sitting next to me is Don Horsley, Don is a farmer and he is at large. Next is Ron Ripley, Ron is in Real Estate Management and he is also at large. Next is Dee Oliver, Dee is our Chair of the Planning Commission, she is a Funeral Director and she is at large. Next is Jan Rosinski, Jan is the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission, she is in Property Management and she represents the Centerville District. The empty seat is Mike Inman, Mike's an attorney and he is at large. Next is Dave Redman, Dave is in Commercial Real Estate, he represents the Beside District. Next is Whitney Graham, Whitney is in Land Development, he represents Lynn Haven District. Next is Steve Barnes, Steve is a farmer and he represents the Princess Anne District. And next is Mr. Dehaan and he is our Planning Director. And would you please introduce your staff?
Yes, sir, Mr. Weiner. We have clerking today, we have Delina Cartwright and Pam Sandlip, as well as Amanda Sampson who is training today to be clerking. With the planning staff, the rest of the planning staff, we had Carolyn Smith, our Planning Administrator, Bill Lanfair, our Planning Evaluation Coordinator, La Dow, Planner Three, Marshall Coleman. We have, let's see, we have Carrie Bookhold, who is our Development Services Administrator, Tori Rice, who's with the City Attorney's Office, Rick Lohman, our Traffic Engineer for the city, Ashby Moss, our Planning Evaluation Coordinator for the SGA office. We have two folks that are new employees to the city, we have Janiza Badwa, who is an urban designer in the SGA office, and we have Antonet Fokes, who is one of our development liaisons as well.
Great. Thank you. The next order of business is the explanation of our rules and our clerk will, City Clerk will take care of that for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the Commission normally conducts its meetings. It is equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the Commission with respect and civility. The Commission requests that if you have a cellphone, please either silence it or turn it off. This is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set of rules is located in the front of the Planning Commission Agenda. Following is the order of business for this public hearing. With withdrawals and deferrals, the Chairman will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. Consent Agenda. The second order of business is the consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believe are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendation. And the regular agenda, the Commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Please note that the actions taken by the Commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by the City Council. The Commission thanks you for your attendance and we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. The next order of business is to address those items to be deferred or withdrawn. Please come forward if you have an item to withdraw. The Chair has been aware that the following item number five has been administratively withdrawn from our agenda today. Do I have any opposition to that? Hearing none, do I have a motion on the board to have that withdrawn?
The Chair will make a motion to withdraw item number five.
Second, please.
Second.
By a recorded vote of ten to zero, Agenda Item Number Five has been administratively withdrawn.
Thank you. Please come forward if you have any items to be deferred. The Chair is aware that the following item number six has been deferred. Is there any opposition to that? The Chair has also been aware that the following item number seven has been deferred. Is there any objection to that? Chair is also aware that item number eight has been deferred. Is there any objection to that? And the Chair has been married aware that item number nine has also been deferred. Is there any objection to that being deferred? Hearing none. May I have a motion to defer items numbers six, seven, eight, and nine?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to defer items six, seven, eight, and nine.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
By a recorded vote of ten to zero, Agenda Items Six, Seven, Eight, and Nine have been deferred.
Madam Chair, to clarify the record, those items are deferred to date certain to November thirteenth. The next Planning Commission public hearing.
Thank you. The next order of business, we will address those that have been placed on the consent agenda and our Vice Chair will handle this portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This afternoon, we have one item on the consent agenda. That item is item number three, and this is an application for the City of Virginia Beach, both applicant and owner, for major entertainment venue signs south of 264, west of Parks Avenue, and slightly east of Parks Avenue, north of Eighteenth Street, west of Washington Avenue, north of Seventeenth Street, and east of North Bird Neck Road. Do we have a representative for this application?
Yes.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor's of the Plan, or Members of the Planning Commission. My name is Rick Marchenek, I am with the Public Works Department, the Facilities Design and Construction Division. I am a project manager that is overhandling the, or overseeing the construction of the Virginia Beach Sports Center. And I'd just let you know that we agree to the seven conditions that are stated in the staff report.
All right, thank you, took my question away. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Case seen, none. The Chairman has asked Commissioner George Akraz to read this into the record, please.
All right, thank you. Again, Agenda Item Three, for signage package for the City, for the Virginia Beach Sports Center and Convention Center. Other than signage allowed by the standard zoning regulations, signage for major entertainment venues, MEVs, is only allowed with approval of the City Council. Sports Center and Convention Center have submitted a joint request to install a signage package consisting of nine signs. The package includes upgrades to two existing convention signs, Convention Center signs, and the addition of seven signs that will support the sports center. Three of these signs include electronic displays. The setbacks of these signs will vary based on the content, contents. The proposed sign package contains four sign types: monument with illuminated board, large directional parking, small directional parking, and illuminated board retrofits. The proposed sports center signs have their own unique design theme that is complementary to the Convention Center signs. The complete electronic display and wayfinding sign package will create a seamless arrival and departure experience by providing clear information in a simple format. In summary, staff finds the proposed signs are appropriate in size, location, and appearance, and appearance satisfies the standards above without causing unwelcome impacts to neighboring properties. With that said, the seven recommended conditions and staff and the Planning Commission recommends consent. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that was the last item on the consent agenda today. I think that's a record. So I would like to move that consent agenda item number three be approved.
The vote is open. By a recorded vote of ten to zero, Agenda Item Number Three has been approved by consent.
Great, thank you very much. To the applicant that had a matter on the consent agenda today. We, Chair has been made aware that we have an additional item on our agenda today that is requesting a deferral. Is there a person to speak on that behalf? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Madam Chairman. The recommend, RJ Nutt, I'm an attorney, and I represent Wolf Brothers Application Number Two on your agenda. We were prepared to go today, and there are two families who've come down today to speak and support the application. But I heard your request, Mr. Horsley, so my client's happy to meet with them. I did want to let you know that without meeting with them, that particular group, we did have extension, extensive discussions with the sta, your staff, the head of the Agro Craft Department about this application several months ago. So I didn't want you to think we ignored that community, so, but we're more than happy to attend on Friday, on Monday, if I'm not mistaken. All right?
That'd be great, we appreciate that, because they, and it happens, it's good timing because they do meet on Monday night, so that'd be great.
So we just want to thank the people who came all the way down and, because we did reach out to all the neighbors around us, so, so thank you very much. If we could defer it for thirty days, we'd appreciate it, if that's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is there any objection to this item being deferred for thirty days? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to defer item two for thirty days.
Second.
By a recorded vote of ten to zero, Agenda Item Number Two has been deferred to November thirteenth.
Thank you all so much for coming down today. The next order of business will be to address the remaining matters on our agenda, and would our City Clerk please call the first item?
Yes, ma'am. It's Agenda Item Number One, Greg McMakin, which is an application for a conditional use permit, bulk storage yard, on property located at forty-one, forty-five, Virginia Beach Boulevard, located in the Lynn Haven District. Would the applicant or the applicant's representative please step forward and state your name for the record?
Greg McMakin.
How do you do?
Good, how are you?
Great. Just a little reminder that you have three minutes, that little yellow light will flash in front of you. But would you like to tell us a little bit about your?
Sure, yeah. It's been a while, probably maybe ten years ago, a friend of mine that we just met introduced me to Mr. Mills, who owns the property, and they had a space in the back of the building there where it's located, that they were using tree debris and stuff from the shopping center that they have and houses that he owns, and storing it there. And I told, the guy's name's Butch, I told him, hey, if I clean this up, can I keep my stuff here? He was like, yeah, let me talk to Bruce about it. So they ended up letting me, allowing me to keep my stuff there. And at the time, I didn't have much of anything. But over time, I've started adding more to my business as far as equipment goes, and started adding wood there too, thinking, you know, maybe I could sell firewood. I had no idea, I thought it was just private property and as long as I'm not causing any trouble, I'm okay. I didn't realize I had to go through this process here. So it, I'll be the first to admit, it started piling up on me and becoming a mess, really. But I might, I might here to keep the wood there, I have no problem getting rid of that. I'm here to be able to continue to keep my equipment there.
Okay. And does anybody have any questions?
Dave.
Yes.
Have you already cleaned up the?
I have pictures of when I was first told, and pictures from yesterday. I don't know if it's on my phone, I could bring it up to you if you like.
That's, that's all right, I'm just curious, have you already cleaned it up?
Yeah, I've started, I've taken probably like fifteen truckloads out of there quite a bit, and it still, it still needs some more cleaning to it, but I've done quite a bit, yeah.
Yes, Jan.
What kind of equipment are you storing there?
I have a dump trailer, another trailer, I have an enclosed trailer, which I kept at my house, but I was renting and the owner decided she wanted to sell, so I had nowhere to bring it. So I brought that there too, it has all my tools inside of it. That's more of hobby tools, it's not really tree service stuff. There are tools in there that I use to fix my equipment. I have a mini excavator, a skid steer, stump grinder, I have a sawmill, I do have a firewood processor, a portable firewood processor I bought to bring on a job and process the Attachments for the skid steer and for the mini excavator.
So mostly landscaping tools.
Pretty much, yeah, yeah.
Anybody else? Dave?
Is that the business you're in?
Yes, yes. I started in those seven on my own, I've been doing it since ninety-eight.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, Don.
So what, you, you remove trees and then you bring them to this site and process them, is that what you're doing?
No, no, I mainly use the site because there's certain places that take certain things, pretty much, like Northland Firewood, they want perfect round logs, sixteen feet long. KW One, they don't want any stump grinds or anything like that. At one point, they weren't taking anything, and I think that's why the pile really started to build up on me, because I just learned about Northland Firewood this year, and KW One was the only place that I would bring it to. And I guess they were waiting for approval from the city if they can continue collecting stuff there, I'm not sure what was going on. So that's the main reason why I started piling one up. But I gotta separate, like if I have a load of wood chips and logs, I gotta separate the wood chips and logs, mainly to save cost on the dump fees. So that's why I would bring it there, separate it, and if I had like a piece of black walnut, I'd put the black walnut to the side or the cedar to the side, maybe I could cut some boards. I do the sawmill thing more for a hobby, it was something I wanted to get into with my dad, but he moved to Bassett, Virginia, so I'm pretty much stuck with it now. But yeah, it's more of a place I dump to separate, to bring to the right dumping place.
So if you clean it all up, where are you gonna dump your stuff then?
Well, I'll, nowhere, I mean, it's, it's nothing that I had to do, it's just something that helped me save money, you know? I could pay the three hundred dollar fee or the hundred and fifty dollar fee, or whatever. I mean, it's just, it just helped me out, that's all. I don't necessarily have to do that.
You had mentioned a sawmill, is it, is it mobile or is it, it's permanent?
No, no, it's a, you could tow it.
Do you use it there, on the site?
I have used it there, yeah, but I've probably, I don't use it often, but I have used it there on site, yeah. But it's nothing that I, my business counts on.
Can I ask if, are you allowed to use a sawmill on site? Staff, sorry.
So if it's part of a conditional use permit for processing of firewood or something like that, then that would be something we would consider through an application for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dave?
Can I, Carolyn? The write-up says that we became aware of the fact that this operation was in place because there was a complaint about wood chipping activities. Is that right?
Yes, sir, it came to our attention via a complaint through the zoning division.
Okay, so it was a noise complaint, somebody said there's somebody who's zipping up stuff next to me and it's too loud, and they called up zoning, came around to you, somebody went out, looked at the site, said, oh no, you don't have a conditional use permit, you file for your conditional use permit and all. I think where I'm thinking on this myself is, first off, I'm here all the time, it's right near my neck of the woods, had no idea this was there.
It's in a secluded area.
So, I think, but the point I'm, the point I'm making here is, if you're not making a bunch of noise, nobody complains. So, I mean, I think that's something that you should consider as we go forward with this application.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else?
Where, so all your equipment's kept on, pretty much on site, you don't keep any, you know, off, off-site at your?
Uh, well.
At your residence, at your?
Oh, no, not at my residence, no. I have trucks that I don't keep there, but Mr. Mills, he, I guess he's the owner of the property right next door, where the farm fresh used to be, and he allowed me to keep my trucks back there. And when he first allowed me, I only had one truck, but then I started wanting to invest in my business and I got a bucket truck and then a grapple truck. So I got three trucks behind there, yeah.
So you have a good-sized business.
As far as equipment goes, yeah, I do. I got everything it takes to get the tree down, that's for sure.
That's good, do you have any employees?
No, I don't have any employees. Yep, yep, I have, my brother, he occasionally helped me at it, you know, there was probably a three-year span where he was back and forth, but it's been about two years now, he's full-time bartending now, so he doesn't really help me much.
Okay.
Yeah, and the main reason why I was getting all this equipment, to make it easier on myself, I could go out with a bucket truck and drop it, come out with my grapple truck, pick it all up, so.
Yeah.
Did you, did you read the staff report?
I, I have, and there's some things I disagree in there. I mean, as far as what is mine that's located on the property now, of course, that's all mine, that's mine. There was another picture of the machine covered in the tarp, I'm not, that's not mine at all. There's a couple of containers there, one right next to where I keep my stuff, that's, that's not mine. There's three further back, kind of behind the trees, those aren't mine. But yeah, what you see there is pretty much mine.
Well, you know, do you understand the dilemma they have? I mean, you know, you're, you're really an industrial type of use, and you're in a commercial residential area and it conflicts.
Yes, yes, I, one hundred percent, I understand, as far as the pile of wood goes, yes, yes.
Noise and all that.
Yeah, I'm.
And storage of things.
I understand the noise too, yeah, yep. And a lot of the noise is from running the chainsaw or running the sawmill, or moving the wood around. I've probably made the most noise the past three weeks than I have ever there. Really, I'm only there maybe once a week, if, if that, it's not a place I go every single day. If I need that equipment, I'll go there to get that equipment. If I need to make room to dump a load so I can separate it, I'll go there, make room, dump a load, separate it, so.
Well, and I, I can surmise what the people on this, up here are thinking, and that is that they're wrestling with, with the dilemma of the use and the ability for you to do your business, which nobody wants to hurt.
Yeah.
You know? But on the other hand, we need to try to find out where the right spot for you to be is, where you, what would be appropriate area for you to be in, so if you don't disturb or you can do your business the way you need to do it.
Sure.
You know what I mean?
Sure, yeah, and the, the wood is, it just added up on me, that's it. That's not part of my business storing wood there. It was, I didn't, I mean, I, hey, I could, it's five o'clock, the places are closed, I could dump it here real quick, and we'd get the job done. That's, that's all it's been about. I mean, if I gotta stop doing that, I have no problem at all stopping to do that. If I gotta haul every bit of wood off of there, I have no problem hauling every bit of wood off there and not bringing wood there, or chips, or anything from a job site to there. My only concern is being able to keep my equipment there, because I have quite a bit of equipment, and I've, I've looked into renting places, and it's something I don't think I would be able to afford, to be quite honest with you. I mean, with the amount of equipment that I have.
So you're not paying any rent at all here?
No, I don't pay rent, he allows me to keep it there. I take care of any kind of debris that he has. If, if they ever called for me chipping, it was because I brought my chipper there. My chipper usually stays behind my bucket truck, I don't, I don't store my chipper there. But I brought my chipper there to chip up any pile of debris that they brought from their, the rental properties and, I mean, it's, I just help them keep the place clean. But at the same, same time, I kind of made a big mess there.
Are you the only person that uses that piece of property?
I am, but I will not allow anybody back there.
Okay, because you mentioned that there were containers and?
Oh, as far as use to the property.
Right, not conducting business, but storing of other things there, who?
No, I mean.
Who, who did the contain, I mean, I guess?
I'm not sure who the container, I believe it's his nephew's container.
He is the?
That's what I've heard, but I'm not.
He, the landlord, the owner, he owned, there's a Connex box, I think, back there?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah. The type you put on a tractor trailer or something, yeah.
He can't control what someone else puts on the property without his permission. I mean, it's just a owner's.
It's just a question of?
Yep, there is the Connex.
Yeah, yeah.
The Connex box?
Well, that's, that's, no, actually, that's further back, that's behind the rug store there. Those are pictures behind Mark Gunn's, the house.
But is, is the Connex box, back to the question, is, is the Connex box yours?
No, no.
It's not, that's the landlord's?
I don't have any boxes, the only enclosed thing I have there is my trailer.
Okay. And, you know, we've got to discuss it up here, but if, would you, I mean, right now, you've got equipment back here, you've got wood back here, you're, you're, you're cutting the wood, you're operating your business back here, but what I'm hearing from you is that you'd be okay if you could just keep your equipment back here and not run your operation as far as cutting wood and, and storing wood?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Well, anybody have any more questions? No? All right, well, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate your time.
No problem. Have a seat, or I can head?
Yes, you can, no, don't leave, but you can have a seat.
All right, thank you.
Is there any opposition or anybody, any other speakers for this application?
No, ma'am.
No?
No.
You know, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. McMakin, do you mind coming back up? I do have one more question. I apologize.
Want me to show you the area?
No, yeah, precisely correct. Thank you for zooming in, whoever did that.
Sir, there's a pointer right there, the little?
Where's, where's your stuff and where's the stuff that someone else has on there?
This is somebody else's.
Okay.
My stuff, if you come in from Virginia Beach Boulevard, there, you have a road that goes behind the building right here.
Mm-hmm.
And on, like those pictures that you saw earlier, that's a little kind of roadway right there, and I just keep my stuff right in this area.
Okay.
Right behind the, I guess it's a?
Behind the commercial building.
The commercial building there, with the white roof?
Yeah.
Okay.
You do have apartments here, but it's probably, I want to say about an acre and a half, maybe two or something of wooded area right there in between.
Okay, that, that was helpful, thank you. Sorry, Dee.
No, no, that's fine. Okay, well, let's close this hearing and we'll open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners. Yes, Whitney?
I'd like to just, I guess, put, I guess, discuss an idea. If the applicant were to remove the firewood, which it sounds like that's what he's in the process of doing, is removing the wood and removing or, or discontinue the operation of using the, the equipment at the site. I mean, right now, I mean, it is, it is very hidden, and it sounds like some of the stuff that's back here is not his. It's, it's the landlords, the Connex boxes, the stuff that's really closer to the residential. We want to, I guess, discuss the idea of, of the removal of the wood, removal of, or the discontinuation of the, of the log splitting, of the wood chipping, of the operation, and, and allow us to operate for maybe a set period of time, say a year. I'm just.
Okay. Yep, Jack, sorry?
Well, my, my question is what, what constitutes the bulk storage yard? So, that's what the application is for. And what is, you know, what's the, what defines, you know, the need for the conditional use permit itself? Um, is it the equipment or is it the operation, you know, of the, the storage of the, the materials onsite? So, what's, what's defining?
So, it's, it boils down to both because the equipment is not typical for, for, it's not like a vehicle, a car, or something that someone has at a commercial location. So, bulk storage, we've done it before for the other landscaping business that you heard last, last month, and included the extra vehicles that they had, and that was in a I-1 district, and also the, uh, the storage of the, the materials, so.
Okay.
I, I, I agree with my colleague, Mr. Graham, here. I'd like to find a way that we can make this work, both for neighboring properties and also for this gentleman who, who had a formula that was working, it was working for 10 years anyway, because there weren't any complaints about it. And so, what I would suggest is, uh, something similar to what Whitney just said, which is, we write a condition that, uh, the site is to be used for the storage of equipment that's necessary for the operation of his business and specifically prohibit any kind of grinding or something like that. I know, you helped me, helped me staff how, how best to write that, but if we write a condition in a way that makes clear that the, it's the operations, it's cutting wood, chipping wood, that's what caused the noise, which got the neighbors up in arms, and that, I think, is where the problem is. If we eliminate that, which he sounds like he's perfectly willing to do, um, and simply have it for the storage of this equipment, which is not inconsistent, obviously, with things that we've done in the past, it's a very secluded site, there's only one side of it and a narrow side of it that backs up onto the residential. If there's nothing back there making noise or nothing creating any particular impact, then it ought to be able to operate, it seems to me, you know, okay. And it's been that way for a long time, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's when the noise-making activities occurred, so I, I think that's, I would like to see if we can't get to that place, because I think that would protect all its, I mean, it's, it's really surrounded by commercial properties. Um, and, you know, and they're not, frankly, are not real busy properties at that. It's only that one sliver at the bottom where the residential is. We keep the noise down, allow him to do that, then hopefully that'll allow him to operate his business. And then I think, you know, we could put a, you know, we could put a one-year timeframe warrant, it's a conditional use permit, they can always revisit if there's a violation. That's my thought.
Ron?
I, I kind of agree with where you're going, but the, I think what Whitney said about perhaps a, a year would probably make some sense, and because, you know, it's, it's not a compatible use.
Not totally.
And if you grant a use permit, and we've done this before, where in the SGA, we've had, we said we've made a time limit on the, um, on the conditional use permit, because you're, you're hoping that they can use the property for a certain period of time and then it transitions to a higher, better use, if you will. But, but in this case, giving a, granting a conditional use permit for a storage yard in this location is probably not a good idea for a long period of time, but, but the man's been in business, you don't want to just say, hey, you got to go find another place like tomorrow, but I think if you had enough time, perhaps he could accomplish that and we could find a way to work with him, work, work with him during that interim period. And I think a year is a reasonable amount of time to, to grant the use permit and then it terminates. That's the way I would see it. And if he came back and made a case and you, the commission decided they wanted to continue it, that's one thing, but I think the idea is to give him opportunity to transition, find another location if he could. Hate to say that, but, because it looks like you're working hard and that's really, um, I know it's a hard business you're in, that's for sure. So, anyway, but that's what I think.
David?
Um, I agree also, and I, this, this question's actually for staff here because the, the application was written up for denial and there's no conditions here whatsoever. Um, but my question is, I know it's, this is well-hidden off of Virginia Beach Boulevard, but what are, and then, when we just came through, just came through, we had some landscaping around it, things like that, but I think you would still need some type of defiant to, to enclose this area, and it's nothing in here, it even shows anything like that.
Yes, sir, if, if it's the commissions want to, uh, better define and, and condition the project, we would recommend, uh, that we defer the project so that we can sit with the applicant to, to better define that.
That's where I was going.
Um, it's not, uh, to, as Mr. Ripley said, it, it's not just the storage, it's also the in-and-out movements of these vehicles on almost a blind turn on Virginia Beach Boulevard. Um, but if it's the commissions' will to, to revise and kind of box in this a little bit, we would request that we defer it so we can have that conversation with the applicant.
Because I'd, I'd like to, uh, address the, the letters of concern with the residents behind there, um, and I think that's, that was where the complaint was coming from. You know, there isn't much of a buffer, we saw that from the photographs, and I don't know that it's this gentleman's responsibility to put the buffer up as much as it is the person that owns the piece of property.
Exactly.
Um, to, to create that buffer.
But being said, and just as a, as a point, you know, the conditional use permit is granted to the property.
Right.
So, the property owner has a, a part of this, and if it's, if it needs to comply with other ordinance requirements, the Connex boxes cannot be there, they're, they're not, they're in violation, so they would still have to be removed.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, the key is, is that, that, yes, it may not be attributable, attributed to him, but the property owner is getting an additional use on the property, then the site needs to be brought into compliance, so that's, that's also a concern.
Yeah, and I think that's a, that's probably something that needs to be addressed as well, just, just for that.
So, I've got a question.
Hold on, let Dan go.
Um, I, I also think we need to, um, make sure that we address the fire marshal's concern, um, because there were several mentions of that, and with the amount of wood that's there, um, you know, if it's just left, that decaying wood can be a real?
He's removing that, though, but, yeah, but the?
Right, but I mean, we need to make sure we address it.
Right.
Tom, Dave? My question is, what would, what would you have done if we had just decided, granted, I mean, you know, recommendation for approval if it doesn't have all those things that you're going to talk to him about? I mean, there are no conditions, there are no landscaping requirements, no, you have the Connex boxes and all of that stuff. I mean, I know what happened, what happened is that owner said, listen, go for it, if you can pull it off and get a conditional use permit, okay by me, so none of that's ever come up.
I mean, we, we would be in the same position where we're at, where we would recommend if you were choosing to, to do something different. We, we didn't go down the path of trying to divvy up his business use. He had a business case to bring it all together, so we, we looked at it all together, so.
Yeah, I think that, you know, possibly working to get the site cleaned and put some conditions on and then, um, give him timeline of a year and that'll be time to move forward to another, you know, start looking for somewhere else to relocate the business probably is in your best interest, just because of the, yeah, Don?
I get my two cents worth in.
Sure, go.
I think if you only allow the storage of equipment, and he says he's going to clean it up, that'll eliminate a lot of the other potential activities that can occur, the grinding, the sawing, and, uh, just allow this equipment storage only upon it getting the property cleaned up. I think he said he's willing to do that.
Okay.
So, I, I don't have any problem with him staying there for another year if he's going to get that done. And then, hope, hopefully you can look for another location, because I know there is some value to, to some of the timber that you cut down, some of the logs are specialty logs, and you need a place to store them, but you can't, you won't be able to do it here, you'll have to find another place, and hopefully you can find another place for your whole operation, but, but I would definitely be willing to go ahead and go, give him a year to, uh, to store his equipment there, get, get the wood cleaned up that he's put there, and, uh, and that'll be your, your responsibility, and then store the, store your equipment there and look for another place.
Okay.
That's, that would be my recommendation. I think that's what basically everybody else is saying.
All right.
So, Don, you're recommending we go ahead and, and vote today, then?
I, I am.
Okay.
And not defer it?
Well, I think they've, they've got a?
Well, then, defer it, I don't think deferring is going to hurt his operation at any.
No, his, his application has a?
Gives you an opportunity to kind of tighten things up a little bit.
Correct, his application for the conditional use permit to stay on his violation notice at this point, so.
I think he probably, I think Bobby needs to put a bow on this a little bit.
Well, what, what he'll do would be put a conditions on there about some of these other things that need to be cleaned up, which won't be his responsibility.
That are out of his control.
That's, that's, that's out of his control, so, like the Connex box and all, that's out of his control, he doesn't have anything to do with them, so, we don't, I don't want to do anything to hold him hostage, that, that, if you understand what I'm saying.
I believe that'll be part of our discussion to understand how he plans to separate his business use and for him to have an opportunity to talk to the property owner as well. So, we, there's an extra step we need to take as we separate the two out, that, that we need to do to have further discussions, so.
Okay.
Okay, good. So, do we have a motion to?
Can we, I just want to make sure, so are you okay with us deferring this for indefinite deferrals?
You can come on up for a second.
To have an indefinite deferral, to work with staff to get this together correctly?
Sure, you just contact me, I would have to come back here.
Well, need the staff to contact you.
Okay.
So, they're going to work with you to separate your business from the other violations that are on the piece of property?
Okay.
And then, kind of get, get it all cleaned up for you?
Okay.
Not the property, but, um, the application.
I, I do have one question about the recommendations. Um, now, when I clean it, when I clean it up and get my equipment there, I know one of the conditions that were brought up is I put a fence around, and everything's nice and clean, and I have my equipment back there, and a year comes by, would I be allowed to apply just to keep my equipment there in the future?
This can be a staff question.
Well, that's going to be for the staff.
Okay.
Because really, you, you're not supposed to be there right now.
Yes, I understand that, yes.
But, but to his question, yeah, you can always come back and?
You can always come back and reapply.
And reapply for the conditional use.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, that it?
Yeah.
So, we need a motion for?
For deferral.
Deferral.
Do we have a, a motion for a deferral?
Uh, yes, a motion for deferral.
Second.
The vote is up, then?
Getting a long ways today.
Mr. Redmond?
It is?
Mr. Redmond?
Ms. Redmond? Sorry.
By recorded vote of 10 to 0, agenda item number one has been deferred indefinitely.
Good, so you'll get with staff?
Oh.
And they're, they're going to help, they're going to advise you on what you need, what your next step is?
All right.
Okay? Thank you.
Madam Chair, our final order of business is agenda item number four, General Booth Venture LLC, which is an application for a conditional use permit, an automobile service station on property located at the northeast corner of General Booth Boulevard and Prosperity Road, located in the Beach District. Madam Chair, the applicant has three speakers.
Okay.
First one, Bruce Berlin, he also, they also provided me with supplemental handouts, which I will pass to Mr. Tahan to pass back.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of planning, my name is Bruce Berlin, 1081 19th Street. Uh, I'm a, one of the managing partners of Venture Realty Group. Uh, Venture is the combination of two firms, Commercial Real Estate Services and Ellis Gibson Development, that have done business here in Virginia Beach for over 35 years. Some of our projects include Red Mill Commons, the marketplace at Hilltop, the crossings at Red Mill, the AmeriGroup Campus, and the proposed dome site as we've renamed Atlantic Park. Today, we're here to seek your approval for a conditional use permit of a 3.2-acre development of a Wawa gas station and convenience store at the corner of General Booth and Prosperity. The acreage is currently zoned B2. Wawa will employ some 50 permanent associates and will feature the architecturally enhanced elevations that you see in your package. We have the engineering firm of Kimley Horn here to answer technical questions, as well as Jeb Bell of Wawa, to speak with you about the history of Wawa in Virginia and the good corporate citizen they are in Hampton Roads. Since I appeared before you last time to ask for a deferral, we've worked extensively with Virginia Beach staff to reach an agreement on how we can improve the intersection and receive staff's approval for our CUP. Venture Realty Group is willing to spend approximately $500,000 in off-site improvements to improve the intersection that include a dual left from Prosperity onto southbound General Booth, a D-cell lane from General Booth into the site, and further, and further widening of lane improvements on Prosperity. In addition, we will set aside funds to be spent for the further expansion of a northbound turn lane from Oceana to General Booth when the city does its smart-scale improvements to this intersection in 2027. For community outreach, we contacted the adjacent neighborhoods of Bird Neck Lakes, Red Wing, and Park Place to introduce the project and offer to make a formal presentation to their civic leagues. To date, none have asked for such meeting as the majority of their members are in favor of the Wawa. We have continued this, uh, email engagement up and through today and, and certainly offered to meet with any civic league prior to city council. By meeting staff's requested onsite improvements, we have gained their recommendation for approval of this CUP and now seek your approval as well. I stand by for questions after you've heard from our other speakers. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Berlin? Great, thank you.
Jeb Bell?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of planning. Happy to be here with you today. My name is Jeb Bell, I'm a real estate engineer with Wawa, a company I'm really proud to represent and have an opportunity to tell you a little bit about today. Um, one thing that I'm, I'm always reminded of, um, is that having grown up in southeastern Pennsylvania, not everyone is as familiar with our name, who we are, what we do, and our history, um, as I'm used to, as I take for granted. Wawa is actually a Lenny, Lenape name, a Native American name for a Canada goose. It's also the name of the town in Pennsylvania where our founder, R.D. Wood, had a family farm, uh, had cows, eventually built a dairy, um, and started selling, uh, milk to his neighbors, and that turned into a, a delivery service. And then, we built our first, uh, Wawa food market, uh, in, uh, April 16th, 1964, it's in Folsom, Pennsylvania, and that was a way to kind of branch out from the delivery, uh, business, which was kind of growing out of favor at the time. Um, we were just a food market, convenience store, items, part of our community for about 32 years, until we opened up, um, we added fuel to an existing store in 1996. So, for 32 years, we were known in Pennsylvania, New Jersey, in that market as just a food and convenience store. When we entered the Virginia market, we had a fu, fuel as an offer, so, you know, down these parts, we're mostly identified with as a fuel service provider, um, but our history, you know, suggests otherwise. So, we, we, we have a lot of things that make us unique in the industry, and I think to the casual observer, some things are immediately evident. Um, we, we operate a clean, safe facility, uh, it's well-attended, it's a busy facility. I think from the outside, you can gather a lot from that. We care about what we do, we're privately held so we can invest in our, in our people, in our, in our, uh, facilities, in our communities that we serve. As a result of our being popular, um, and running a good business, we obviously create, um, a lot of revenue for the, you know, municipalities, um, but I think that doesn't paint a clear enough picture of really the value that we represent. Um, I think what you'll see, um, is the, the, the real successes inside the store. Um, if, if you have ever seen a grand opening or hopefully you'll consider attending one in the future in Virginia Beach, um, what you'll, what strikes me is, um, is the faces of the people that are there, whether that's, you know, old customers who now have one in their community, or it's the new associates and the employees with a new opportunity. So, you'll see a smile on the face of a general manager who's got a new opportunity, moving up from another store, right? As we grow, we create opportunities, um, for all of our associates. Um, the assistant general manager is going to be a kid from another store who's got a leadership, um, position at this store. And then you've got, you know, all, all in all, there's about nine management positions And then you've got, you know, all, all in all, there's about nine management positions, and there's forty to fifty associates that'll be employed at the store. But at the ground level, I guess what I would say is, Wawa is an opportunity, it's a ground floor opportunity, it's an entry level position, but the sky is the limit, because all around me at work, and, and at every store, are people that started at the bottom and worked their way up, because the only thing that you need to be successful at Wawa is heart and to care, and with that, you can go to any level. I, I'm in the construction real estate department, and I've got guys working next to me that started in the stores, our head of store design started in the stores. It, it really is, I think, unique in that respect. We're privately held, we provide tuition reimbursement, we provide an ESOP, an employee stock option program. We have, this, it's, it's a real opportunity to actually retire. So, I'm proud of everything we do, and I'm happy to be here and take any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bell? No, thank you.
Randy Royal?
Chairperson Oliver, members of planning commission, Randy Royal, Business Stress, Kimbley Horn Associates, 4525 Main Street, Virginia Beach. I'm here to talk primarily about the engineering. I understand you got a little bit of a briefing this morning, it's a pre-briefing, but want to talk about storm drainage and traffic. Storm drainage, we've talked about before, with rezonings, with use permits, we're held to a much higher standard. Twenty percent more rainfall intensity, foot and a half sea level rise, which is what we've done, excellent, they've got the new plan up there. It's a little different from the one that you saw previously. You see the pond there in the upper left-hand corner? That's about an acre and a half for a 3.2 acre site. That's forty-seven percent of the site for storm drainage. Again, towards the city's strive to fix flooding and make sure that we don't create any additional flooding, so there's to be zero impact on the downstream systems. We've presented preliminary calculations to staff, and they have agreed that with the final design, they're confident that we can have that zero impact. Traffic, yes, this is a busy intersection. The primary movements are the, let me see if I can get it right here, the, the westbound, excuse me, the northbound General Booth Boulevard lefts, and the Oceana eastbound rights, people going to, going to, coming from Oceana. We don't have any impact on that, other than possibly a positive impact to pull people off of it. Our impacts are the westbound lefts and through on Prosperity, coming out of Prosperity from the site, and the eastbound through movements from Oceana, people going straight across to Prosperity. To that end, and Mr. Berlin just told you, on Prosperity Road, doesn't show there, can we go back to the other site plan, please?
Marshall.
Hard to see there, but we've got an extra left turn lane, so we've got, there we go, dual lefts coming out of Prosperity there. And Mr. Berlin spoke to it with the smart scale project on the other side, previously, there was going to be dual rights, and there was going to be a combination through and left turn movement. We are paying for an additional lane, so that there's a dedicated left turn lane and a dedicated through lane, in addition to the two right turn lanes. That, and the right in, right out, the, on General Booth, and the left in on Prosperity, that's the half million dollars these guys are putting forth to improve the traffic situation out there. I've seen the emails, I've seen it happen, Dunkin' Donuts is, is a problem. That's, that's part of this, it's a busy intersection, people are making the left on General Booth on the Oceana, somebody's slowing down, or it's backed up in Dunkin' Donuts. Not a whole lot we can do, not a whole lot traffic engineering can do, that was a by-right use, they didn't go through this process. Because of this process, we're putting a lot of improvements in. Maybe people are going to Wawa, and there's less traffic going that way, but that's a situation that we're, we're not creating the same situation. I think a lot of the, what you may have heard from the neighbors is that situation there, the turn into Dunkin' Donuts. The use itself is a by-right use. The gas is why we're here in front of you, for a use permit. There are other uses that could go on there by right. We have actually looked at fast food with a drive-through, fast food without a drive-through, coffee shop with a drive-through. That particular use fits on this property, and it would generate more traffic than the Wawa would. So, you're getting a Wawa, which I think you heard from Jeb, and I think everybody's seen them, they're a great use. They employ a lot of people, it's a good corporate citizen here, getting a half million dollars of improvements. We've addressed the traffic and storm drainage, be happy to speak to it more, but hope with all that, you'll see fit to recommend approval to city council, and I'll stand by for questions. Thank you.
Yes, Don?
Randy, is the stormwater, will that service the rest of the site as well?
No, sir.
Or is that just for the Wawa operation?
If, if you'll go back, that is for the Wawa, the intention is for the, when the other stuff comes in, they will probably enlarge it. At this time, they didn't want us to design everything for the other sites, because we didn't know, but that will be the plan, so it'll be efficient there. But that's just for the Wawa, is that acre and a half?
Thank you.
Yes?
Thank you.
I've got one question.
Oh, yes.
So, did you infer that there, there are no impacts to General Booth, based on the Wawa? Because I think that...
There are minor impacts, we've, we've reduced them with what we're proposing to do with the laneage, additional laneage improvements there.
Right, because I think Rick kind of inferred that indirectly it will affect the traffic, just because it's going to shorten the...
Delay time.
The...
It'll link in the delay time.
Right.
The green phase has to be what it is.
Right, that, that there's, it's going to take up the capacity that is, isn't necessarily attributed to General Booth, but, but they're taking that...
So, let me clarify, the, the zero impact with storm drainage, that's what we, we have to do. There is impact to traffic. My point being that, without this use permit, we wouldn't be here, if there was not gas, and you wouldn't get, you, you would certainly have an impact, you would have possibly more of an impact. By-right stuff could go on there, and you get none of these laneage improvements, there still is an impact. We cannot make a zero impact on this, on this intersection, but we have reduced it. Mr. Lowman can speak to that, with the improvements we're proposing there. Okay?
All right.
Yes?
I have a question. And, and Randy, you may not know the answer to this question, but the Dunkin' Donuts, how large of a site is that?
Half acre, acre maybe, it's not, and it's that weird triangular shape, the old bone shakers.
Right, right.
And, and I suspect that there was limited access on General Booth Boulevard, there's an opening for us, there may not, I'm looking at Rick, there's not one, right? So, there's no access on General Booth Boulevard, so the only access to that property can be from Oceana. So, again, Rick's hands were pretty much tied, and that's one of the reasons we got an issue there.
Right. Okay, and this is a 3.2 acre site?
Yes, sir. And it has a gap in the, in the General Booth Boulevard, limited access, we've combined it, so the other uses, nobody else will get another access, as Mr. Ripley was speaking to the other developments, they will share the access that we have, the D cell lane on General Booth for it, which is sized appropriately, and a left turn in from Prosperity.
Yeah. So, with the B2 zoning, I mean, there, there could have been, you know, Dunkin' Donuts could have gone here, as well as possibly two other uses?
Right.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
We have any other speakers?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Y'all want to close this for the commissioners? We'll close the hearing, and anybody have any comments? Yes, Dave?
Where is this aerial from, number one? Am I missing the Dunkin' Donuts on there?
It's not there.
Yeah, I mean... Probably get a little more modern aerial? And anyway, the, my, there are going to be impacts for just about any kind of improvement in the built environment. In this case, this applicant has done, has gone a very long way towards mitigating those impacts to transportation improvements. When an alternative scenario, which is to say by-right development of this site, would result in greater impact and no mitigation. At the same time, these facilities, in my view, are luxuries. They are so busy because people like them so much, and all of the people in the surrounding communities are going to come to enjoy them and be convenienced by them in ways that they don't today. If you're in a business like mine, where you move around a lot in the daytime, you stop at places like this, which I didn't when I was chained to a desk, but in the job I'm in, I'm, I'm always moving around. And you see the people who come in, day in, day out, various times for the day, they get gas, they get a breakfast sandwich, they get a sandwich in the afternoon, they buy drinks, they, they get a cup of coffee, they stop. They are so busy because they serve so many needs. I wish one were closer to my house. Above all, I think, and that's a good slide to have up, thank you, it seems to me they've taken really good care in designing this site. Both of those entrances are at the far corners of it, it's as far back on Prosperity and as far back on General Booth as you can get, they're a long way from the intersection, the building's set, well set back from the roadway. It's just done in a way to minimize impact as best as possible, to mitigate the impact with two transportation projects, and all with a use that people value and enjoy, and we ought to have more of them. This is a commercial corner, there's no two ways about it, you can stare out on a map and know it's a commercial corner. This strikes me as a very appropriate and desirable commercial use, and they've taken great care to do it, so I'm going to support it, and I hope you will too.
Anybody else? Jan?
I just wanted to, to kind of piggyback on that and say that it looks to me like a lot of thought went into this, and not just thought for today or tomorrow, but for thought down the road, with being able to make the improvements and, and, you know, help the city out with the, the, the traffic improvements in that area, and, and I think that's what we need, is good neighbors like that, that are willing to not just think about their lot of land and what they can do today, but how they can help impact the city as we move forward. So, I'm going to support the application.
Whitney?
I, I, I agree with both of you too. It's not very often you see a developer come in for, for really one use at this point, who's adding two lanes and a turning lane. I mean, that, it's expensive, and I think they, I, I agree, I think they did a great job trying to make the site work.
Ron?
Can I make a motion to approve?
Please, I'll second it.
Second.
The vote is open. By recorded vote of ten to zero, agenda item number four has been approved.
All right. Thank you. I think that is our last... Is that it? Is that it?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do want to provide, I forgot to do this earlier, the survey that you had provided input on is going to be available tomorrow. It's at, on publicinput.com, it has eight very short questions that we hope to tease out some information from folks, and then also expand our list of people that we can reach out to, to participate. Hope, I know, and Mr. Weiner and Ms. Oliver are a part of the public input portion, so you're aware of it, but we're also printing out cards that we're going to be handing out at the permit, at, at our office location, as well as just trying to reach every board and commission that's staffed by the city. So, just a heads up, as you look forward, we'll probably send it to you, so you know what it looks like, but we would love for each of you to take the survey, it should only take two minutes.
This is comprehensive plan?
Yes, for comprehensive, I'm sorry, yes, for comprehensive plan.
Thank you very much. All right, is there any other further business besides that? No? Are you leaving? If not, on behalf of my fellow commissioners, I'd like to thank everyone for attending today, and thank the planning director and his staff for all their excellent work in keeping us straight. Thank you, and we are adjourned.